All right.
Close? Motion passes. New business. A, transfer funds from construction fund to operation fund. And we do have that.
Mr. President, I'd like to have a move a motion to transfer funds from the construction fund to the operation fund where it's been determined by the board of trustees that is their intent to transfer unused and unencumbered funds from debt fund effectively February the 10th, 2020 for any purpose deemed relevant for school operations by the board. The amount to be transferred from the construction fund to the operation fund is $1,872,000. Be it resolved at the board trustees, Delphi School Corporation, Carroll County, Indiana, has determined to transfer unused and unencumbered funds to construction, from the construction fund to the operation fund also on February 10th, 2020. The intent is to use operation fund monies for any purpose deemed relevant for school operations.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Discussion? Just clarifying, this is the geo bond, taxable geo bond money that we are receiving, putting it back, transferring it over into the construction fund, to the, from the construction fund to the operation fund. Any discussion? Hearing none? Call and pay for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. P, transfer of fund ordinance.
Uh, Mr. President, I move to have a resolution to transfer of funds of ordinance whereas Delphi Community School Corporation has excess funds in certain accounts of the education fund and operation fund which are needed in other or such funds and the board of school trustees hereby determine such funds shall be transferred from one account to the other. And whereas the transfer does not require expenditure, expenditure more money than is set out for the current budget as finally determined approved by agencies of the local and state government for expenditures. Whereas the board of school trustees is now meeting in regular scheduled public meetings in which the following designated transfer funds has been discussed. Then be it hereby ordained that the following counts be increased and decreased as shown in the attached budget transfer report. It further obtain that a copy of the ordinance be certified to the county auditor. Said ordinance was moved and seconded as follow on February 10th, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. Okay, a motion and second on the transfer of fund ordinance. Any discussion?
Will we get some kind of a breakdown on what, where the money is going to go to?
Now, Andrew, I'm gonna put, put you on the spot here. When this money is transferred, it will win certain education fund, regular day fund.
Well, I'm not sure what money we're talking about here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a, what it is, is basically given the authority to transfer the money around to the, but as we budget, it won't be for an increase or anything like that, of course, so that, to take care of any underreach or overreaches. And so, based off of this here, that whenever there's a transfer amount, we'll get notified and we'll actually still act on that part, so this is just a...
There'll be a motion each time, where this money should be transferred.
Yeah. So, it's just legal that we have to do, every year, I think, before in the beginning of the year, if you remember, we went through all that.
Well, I know we always do it at the end of the year, but...
Right, and this is part of that, actually, that we didn't actually do it until we were there, so there's one for that, so. You got a little question?
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the transfer of fund ordinance as presented. Call and pay, say aye, please.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes.
C, I'm the only one that actually signs off, so everybody knows who's signing right now, those are the ones.
Okay, C is the Carroll County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Everybody got a copy of that? They need to know, they wouldn't get a printed copy, because things like 150 pages, almost, 180.
No, I'm not reading that one.
Right, thanks. Basically, this comes from Mike Fincher, the director of Carroll County Emergency Management, and to make a long story short, they're asking that the board approve this plan, and basically, I think the school corporation is, their part in this is to offer up facility uses, usage in the event of a disaster of some sort, gym space or whatever. And other than that, I think that's where we, as a school, come in here. So, we're looking for a motion to approve that plan?
Mr. President, I move to accept the document as presented and present it for...
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Blair also says he may be eligible for federal funding for storm shelters as well.
Reimbursement.
Yeah, I have a question about that. I've been getting these emails from these companies wanting to sell us these safe rooms or whatever. Would we qualify for money towards some of those?
You gotta apply for the federal grant, but I think by approving this, you're in a better position to keep the safety. We have a plan already approved by FEMA.
You're talking like them, two, $3,000, that holds like 10 or 15, 30 kids maybe if they're younger, yeah. Yeah, they're obviously...
Yeah, there's, I don't think there's any way that we could afford those otherwise.
No.
But this possibly could be a way that we could maybe get a few of them or something.
During such an event, do we fall, do we fall under their general liability compared to ours, you know?
Who's general liability?
Well, if we, if we sign up for this and either FEMA or EMA or...
Open our doors so that people can...
Right.
...concernable on that. I would think there's still the potential that your injured, like, I don't know, slipping dollars, that's...
Well, if we don't have, if somebody's up to grade, that's our fault.
Right.
But if it's outside of that, then do you know if we have any coverage for that, or...
Oh, we would have insurance coverage, for sure.
Yeah, but somebody else's.
Oh.
Well, I think if it's deemed FEMA, you know, emergency, just like they make a Tensei or anything like that, there is, the government kinda, I assume, that, I mean, of course, assuming, I don't want that to last too, so...
I think that's something that needs to be looked into.
How soon we need to do this? That'd be a good question. I mean, Mr. Fincher was...
Yeah, I'm wondering if he would...
I mean, I don't see that...
I don't see anything, anything we have to do. There ain't nothing about probability.
Tell you what, Mr. President, I'd like to table this to the next meeting, maybe we get some more information, and at that point in time, maybe Mr. Fincher can come and help us or... Bill Simmons.
Yeah, we have a motion and second to table the multi-hazard mitigation plan until the March regular scheduled meeting. Any discussion on that?
I think we should.
Hearing none? Call and pay, say aye, please.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes, that is tabled. D, Food to School Purchasing Cooperative, July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. This is also in your packet?
Yeah.
They're asking us to approve the, enter into the co-op for purchasing items.
Mr. President, I made a motion to enter into the 2020, 2021 annual participation commitment with this food to school cooperative, I believe is the name.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the purchasing contract, or the, let's see, the for, food to school purchasing cooperative agreement, July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. Any discussion on that?
I'm just curious why we're not looking at the bakery piece of that as well? I'm guessing nobody really knows the answer to that, but...
It's not reliable, the bakery cart is not as reliable as what we're doing with our bids now.
Okay.
That's all she gave me for that.
Thank you.
We've been part of this for quite a while, so...
Not this, not this.
A separate cooperative.
Right.
Well, we've done bids individually for commodities, but...
So, does this take away part of the bid process on the...
What else? Something else? Yeah. Probably what it looks here. The way it looks, man, I think this probably is something that Mr. Wong probably has a handle on from his previous experience, of looking at the thing, it's probably a group that he's worked with before, and that's probably just looking at...
Yeah, he's pretty experienced on it, isn't he?
Yeah, right.
He's noticed all the list of schools, it was predominantly from up that direction.
Right, and there's some pretty big schools in there, too.
Oh, yeah.
It's at the power.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor. Call and pay, say aye, please.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. E, Classified Staff Hourly and Salary Roster, you have a copy of that in your packet, or somewhere here, on what files? But the state board account suggests this be done yearly in January. And it is for the classified staff, gives their hourly rate hours for salary range. So, we're looking for the, a motion to approve this. I make a motion that we approve the classified staff hourly and salary roster.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Discussion? And this is to be done yearly.
I do have that discussion.
Okay?
As I look at this, how do I determine if it's hourly or salary?
Do we have any classified staff considered salary? Go ahead.
It says over here, it says 26 K schedule, which, like, for study year, it'll say salary 26 K.
Okay.
We'll run the car right. So, I think that's how the salary for the class card is.
Well, some of them are listed 26 K, and then it has salary, others, I don't know. Any, any other questions or comments on this? I'm looking, is our, do you see our, is our maintenance panel here? Great, there he is, right at the top on the left page. Okay.
Can we take care of this in the January meeting? I believe we're just applying state board now to stuff, we're catching up on what we need to do.
Someone say hourly, salary 26 K, someone say hourly 26 K, someone just say 26 K schedule.
That, that's how Gaylor breaks it up, that'd be a Gaylor question for them.
I think that they're on a, probably a, like a two, full year, 12 month, maybe 26, right?
Yeah, I think that's...
If it's, it could fall under, maybe like a salary, would be considered 26.
Because in systems, when you look at the first charge you get, they shouldn't be...
And that's one thing we talked about in the past, is how it's broke out from wage and it still lists as a salary, but how we need that full break type of thing, is one thing.
We have several that are hourly rate shown, and then, and that says salary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether they can get overtime or not, it's decided.
Right.
If you're not comfortable, I would just favor that.
Yeah.
Do you think you want more clarity on it?
I make a motion to, if we can get a clarification on who is exactly hourly and who is exactly salary.
Okay, we have a motion and second to table this item, get more information. Call and pay, say aye, please.
Aye.
Close? Motion passes, the item is tabled. Okay, six other business. Proposal to begin middle school softball in the spring of 2020, baseball, middle school baseball in the spring of 2020, and middle school soccer for the fall of 2020. I believe you have those proposals in your packet.
Yeah. I will make a motion that we approve, proposal to begin DCMS softball, DCMS baseball in the spring of 2020, and soccer in the fall of 2020.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Discussion?
Yeah, I got it, I guess. Mr. Sims, please come for us, I think this is in your wheelhouse.
Yes, sir.
So, we've been given a list of various things and costs and everything, right, cover costs, fundraising, all that, right? So, the basis of this is for, to become a school function sport at middle school level, is that correct?
Correct.
There is some comments in here that I, I look at, as far as middle school softball, baseball, nothing to mention about paying coaches, I, I, which we, it talks about that. And then we get to the softball, or the soccer, and then you're talking about maybe using the girls' money, because we don't currently have a girls' soccer high school, because of the numbers, and using that then for potential money for, at the middle school, is what you guys kinda stated in here.
You're talking about the coaching staff?
From a coaching staff point.
Well, so, what you're gonna end up with is if we have a girls' varsity program...
Right.
We've got a stipend for that.
Right.
If we have a boys', we have a stipend for that.
Right.
If for some reason, the girls' program stumbles again, what we've really got is, we're gonna combine the girls' coaches with the boys' coach, so that we've got an assistant to be able to deal with that, because we've got so many kids, and then the varsity boys' coach and the girls' coach, which has been caved, would actually, those two would run the middle school program. So, they're, they're gonna get paid one way or the other.
Right, that's what it kinda says here.
Yeah, that...
It kinda sounds like you wanna take money from the girls and potentially pay that.
That's not the case.
Because any paid position, we, we have not, I don't think, I don't know if we've talked to the teachers' union about if there is a stipend, not a stipend, you know, type deal.
Right.
So, you know, that would have to be, in my book, looked at before we get approved, something like that. The other thing I wanna make sure, and I guess, since I'm talking, and we've kinda talked about this before, I wanna make sure that no kid, number one, gets out, because we are replacing some of the potential, other community softball or baseball potential on some of that. I mean, we're in to build the theater, right, it's, it's the, it's the funnel. And so, I just wanna make sure that, two things, that, one, that I have the guarantee that that won't, no matter what, the kid ain't gonna be cut from a team. I mean, if we're gonna do this, everything, kid should have an opportunity, because he may not be the best player today, but in two years, he may be your best player, and I hate seeing him get cut, because that's the program, that's the part of a feeder program or our community softball, baseball, whatever, right? And so, that's the way I look at that, and this is kind of replacement, and so, I just wanna make sure, in my book, I just kinda voice my opinion on it. So, I don't intend for that, I, I understand that, but I just wanna make it clear that if, if I see, I'm gonna say something pretty quick, so...
My, my comment to that would be that we will, we will do a better job with that than what a pony league will do. If we've, if we've got enough, we've got enough seats to have three teams, we'll have three teams, and with the way the schedule's set up with middle school kids, we'll play multiple, multiple, multiple games, that, that's relatively easy from our point of view. Actually, I think, I'm a program guy, I've always been a program guy, and I believe in our varsity coaches being able to build a program, and if, if they've got it under there, and Varela will do a much better job than what a, a group of, no offense, parents at the little league or pony league or somebody else would do, because it's gonna be the way the varsity coach wants it done properly, how, how kids are taught or done properly, with, with the understanding is, we want as many kids as be available as possible, there's no question about that, or no question.
I appreciate that.
We want them all to play.
I appreciate that, I just wanna make sure that every kid gets to play, because if you happen to end up with two and a half teams, you can't do the third, I wanna make sure that every kid gets to play.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, and I know how you are, and I just, I just wanna publicly state that, I've had a lot of parents, or parents have contacted for, for different reasons, right?
Absolutely.
And that is one concern, it seems to be a subject, so I appreciate it.
And we're trying to eliminate as much of the cost as we possibly can for kids, so that they can actually be involved, so I think that's the other positive part of it, is that my, my office will have some control of that, you know, as far as what it's gonna cost a young man or a young lady to be involved, so we can eliminate some of the costs, so...
I have a couple of concerns. One, being there's no transportation provided. I don't know if that's quite right or not, since we do provide transportation for basketball, volleyball, and I don't want parents be upset because there's no transportation provided, so I think, I think we need to take a look at seeing if there's possible, I mean, some of the games are not gonna be played here, right, the home games are in Monticello, I mean, so there's gonna be some travel involved, maybe...
Absolutely.
The parents will have, be able to go there and drive, but other games, you know, and I don't want to see kids not be able to make a game because they don't have a way to get there.
Yeah, totally on your side, I totally agree with that, and one of the things that the three coaches and I have talked about is, you know, once, once we get the approval is, the next step is, how do we refine this to make it fair to everybody? I, I think this is just the first step into having a discussion about what can we do with transportation that'll help all these kids, and maybe that's the next discussion. Our big thing was that the softball and, and baseball in particular, gets almost upon us, and both of those coaches have gone out of their way to make sure we've got schedules for this spring for these kids, so they've, they've already put together a tentative schedule, they're just kinda waiting on approval, and then, and then I think it's boohoo's me and all of you to have a discussion about how we are gonna handle the transportation issue.
By making this a Delphi sanctioned sports, as far as insurance, all that, I mean, basically, we're gonna treat this like any other sport, to the point, you know, the hat, or the, the transportation, it all falls relevant, right? I mean, it's all relevant, then if I'm gonna supply something for football, or like we're doing, that in reality, we should be supplying for that, too. I agree what you're saying, I, I just wanna be upfront now, that if we make it a sanction thing, then in my book, we should support that, that way, and I know it's not costing, it's nothing for coaches, stuff like that, it's gonna cost a little bit of transportation. Most of the teams are two, because you're playing two different games, white bus is supplied, and the coaches can actually do the driving on that, right? Okay, so...
Well, all Ross has to do is put them through the staffs, and we're pretty much good guys.
Test them and wait, we get them.
I have one more question here. What about academics?
They'll still be the same as all our own middle school kids are, and, you know, it's pretty seamless, actually, Mrs. Circle started that when she was down there, and Mr. Reddick's kept it in place, where, you know, we have policies in place, Mr. Reddick tell us what they are, since...
Our first grade check of the season is at the midterm, which actually will be posted tomorrow at 8:00 AM, and then, for the rest of the season, every two weeks, we have a grade check, if a student has an F, the first time they receive any Fs, then they're off for two weeks of games, they can still go to practice, and then if, any other time during the season they get an F, another two week period, then we remove them from the game.
So, I, you know, basically, what all, all of you have just shared, and Kirk hits the exact same way, we've got a policy for football, we've got a policy for volleyball, we've got a policy for basketball, it's gonna be the same for our middle school, these, these three middle school teams, we haven't been changing it, based on what we already do.
Mr. Sims, if I can follow up a little bit on that, so for softball and baseball, you really, basically identified that this is no cost to the corporation based on what you're doing, you're absorbing the pony program for baseball, so they've got the pork burger sales, which is very lucrative, that pays for a lot of it. Girl softball, they already done part of that, is that in addition?
They have not.
They've not.
They have not.
And so, capacity issues, donations, and all that would still be the same, probably, because you're taxing a donor, perhaps?
Yeah, no, and, and all that stuff, you guys know about trying to raise money, do anything, and, you know, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul sometimes, but, but we'll, we'll survive, we'll figure it out. Typically, what I'll do is, like, I'll earmark the money that the, the middle school kids raise, and we'll use it for multiple sports, it's not gonna just be earmarked so that whatever money Mr. Wong brings in for the pony league is, that's gonna be the only thing it's used for, we will use it for that age group of kids, and make sure that all of our sports are basically covered, so...
So, currently, pony has a cost as to softball, the upper player.
Right.
Covers uniforms and what it was used to... Covers uniforms and other things that are useful. What about our kids that have struggled financially, you're aware of those when they're in high school sports?
Probably.
Middle school, for that matter, but is there a way to, to continue to assist some of those students? Do we have means to do that, or how, how would we handle that so we keep the?
Well, one of the things I like about our uniform program, and the district club's been really helpful to me in the last two or three years at, at helping pay for some uniforms, is, well, I prefer for all of us to have uniforms that get collected and then we turn around and we'll use them again. And so, some of these uniforms, even though the coaches have got on there, there's gonna be a uniform cost, soccer, there's not gonna be a uniform cost, I got four sets of soccer uniforms right now, so we're in really good shape for soccer. We'll get to that point with baseball, and we'll get to that point with softball too, um, but, um, I, I'm a, I've always been a guy that has been, this reuse stuff as much as we can. When I was at Wentzley, I was the varsity basketball coach, we bought a set of practice uniforms my first year, they never changed, so that when a kid came into the program, he had the same, he only had to buy one set of practice uniforms, and it lasted him for four years, and, and my, my point to that was, why are we gonna make people buy something new every year when all we need is red and black and we're good to go, I mean, pretty much? So, to answer your question, I will do everything in my power to make sure every young man and every young lady, whether they can afford a pair of shoes or not, gets a pair of shoes, because I'm gonna tell you, and, and we have the means to do that.
Is that a if they fit?
Yeah. Yeah, my, my dad just made me use my older brother.
Some of the uniforms are, you know, big on something.
Yeah, so, yeah, Gil, I mean, uh, that's what I've always tried to accomplish, and.
Yes.
I sure as heck would hate for any of our kids, uh, and I, believe me, I've had a lot of parents call about, I can't really afford this, 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 or this, and it's one of the beautiful things about this community, sponsorship is huge with athletics, and I can call, I can make a phone call in about two minutes, have, have, have it taken care of.
Uh, soccer looks a little bit different to me, when I glance at that one, trying to figure out the whole cost structure.
Yeah, and I, I think it's, I think, I think it's a, I think it's yet to be refined as to how we're gonna do it, and, and a lot of that's gonna have to do with how many kids get involved, because we, it's kind of an unknown. It really is kind of an unknown.
I did have, um, at least one person ask me, what will this do to our track program, particularly with middle school? And then, of course, that means a high school, do you have a concern for that, or do you think that's, is that gonna take kids away from a program that's already struggling?
Uh, if you went back twelve, fourteen, fifteen years ago and said, do you think the soccer program's gonna hurt the football program? Would have been the same question, so, I, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know what, I can't really foresee the future, but I just think it gives more kids more avenues to do more things that we need to do, and that's what we're all about, so. I, I hope that it works that way, I really do, uh, because I think it's good for our middle school kids. There's not a lot of stuff for middle school kids to do, to tell you the truth, athletically, I mean, we've got some sports, but we don't have as many sports as we do at the varsity level, so, I, I just, I think it's a good avenue.
I'm curious, uh, what you guys think of this.
I think it's a great idea, because, um, yeah, like you guys said, it's a bigger program, but I'm just trying out that they're trying to do that with families, and that's, and that will help a lot, and yeah, the fact that I could possibly take like one thing right from another, I mean, that's gonna be a factor no matter what, but at the same time, I just lost kids on Tuesday, because they'll be able to do something that they love, even if they find something new, like for me, I know I tried something new going into high school with football, and I didn't like it, but, um, but it was, I got to try something, and it's, it's fun, so.
I, I like it, um, I just came from the little girls' youth camp tonight, and so we're getting even elementary involved, and so I think it's really gonna help our programs, and I know my brother did like four sports in the spring, he did track and baseball and basketball, and I think he has another team, so I think if they really want to, they can do it, so, it's all about talent.
One thing I'd like to see, I mean, nothing like what I mean, uh, but as we go forward with these programs, that, uh, all our feeder programs and whether it's cheerleading, POMs, whatever, just be able to sit and talk at all of them, and how they're actually helping us out to develop through the cheapest price on the financial of each one's needs, and make sure that everything's staying fair and equal, like, I, I know you're doing, but I, you know, bring to the board a, and on that, so.
No, and I think you guys have, and, and, and Mr. Priest in particular, and I have talked about that as far as, yeah, and I'm, I'm in the process of buying QuickBooks, which, uh, QuickBooks for athletics, I, I basically can break down every individual sport as far as the, the entire thing, it's like their own little, it's like their own little company, um, and, and I, I operated QuickBooks for like seventeen years, so I'm really familiar with it, but I think it'll give us a really good, and even for me, I, I'd say it'd be interesting for me, so. So, Mr. Priest, I appreciate you, uh, giving me some ideas about how to do that, and make sure that, uh, make sure we know what's, where all the revenues came from in particular.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor, on the floor, for, uh, to approve the middle school softball and baseball for this spring, and the middle school soccer beginning in the fall.
Got one more question, if you'll entertain it, with middle school soccer, uh, are we gonna approve that with the understanding we're trying to start, um, uh, boys and girls for high school, and then based on what happens with that?
We're, we're, as of right now, we are a, we, we are a high school that has a girls' varsity program and a boys' varsity program, and we're gonna leave it that way as long as we possibly can leave it that way. And if we are fortunate enough to have both of those teams next year, we've got coaches, varsity coaches that are willing to take care of the middle school, so we'll have all three is, is the goal, that's the goal. And, and we've got the facilities to do it, because thanks to Camps and Kempson, we've got another set of goals out there, and, and so, we, I mean, we've got, we've got the facilities to do it, and the space.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye please?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Ashby has had his hand up, a couple of seconds.
Just on that, is that gonna be a net zero cost to the corporation, taxpayers for all three sports that have, sponsorships are so easy to get, or?
Well, well, in, in the athletic department, pretty much for that part of it, if you, if you eliminate costs for coaches, it's pretty much a zero cost for the corporation anyway, other than some travel, so, yeah, based, based on, you know, uniforms and equipment and all that stuff, that, that'll all come through me, and, and, and I'm not gonna be sending a bill, obviously, to school corporation for any of that stuff, the only thing it might cost me would be transportation at this point in time, because there are no coaches, uh, that ECAs at this point in time.
Maybe get Weir to sponsor the transportation. I'm not laughing.
Uh, future dates and agenda, two thirteen from four to eight thirty is the middle school, high school meals of hope. On February sixteenth is the FFA middle school and high school ski trip at Perfect, Perfect North Slopes. Uh, February twentieth to six PM is the FFA auction at the high school. Also on, uh, February twentieth is the FFA middle school and high school in Clinton Central for soar and proficiency grading. Uh, March ninth at seven o'clock is our next regular board meeting, and don't forget dinosaur day next week. Okay, board comments, Ms. Gasser.
Okay, so, um, I don't think he mentioned this, but, um, with Alex and his, um, journey with his cancer, we had a champion's walk for him as he, um, went to his, uh, surgery, and we, the whole school, or gave him a farewell and wished him luck as he went to surgery, and then we also, um, everyone advertised sending him like these messages that the, um, hospital would print out, and so there were a lot of notes for him as he got out of surgery, and I think that was really cool, and it really shows how the community is supporting him, stuff like that, um, and then just, I would be excited to see what dinosaur day will be. I know I was interested in dinosaurs of that age, and.
Um, well, along with, um, students getting very involved, I know that for the, um, the, uh, band and choir, so on and so forth, there were quite a few students actually stood up in their zones this year and decided to go up a group, um, so basically, uh, I noticed about three of them in the band, and I think one extra one choir who, um, tried to group one piece, which basically used to end up either standing or not. Um, unfortunately, we didn't have any that ended up going, but it's really nice that these students are trying new things, because, um, it helps them a lot, and it's stuff that they've done almost all their high school, so it's nice to see them really pushing themselves.
Mr. Strausser.
Uh, just thank you for everyone participating tonight, and, uh, and I really liked the, uh, the additional middle school athletics, I grew to see less than.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Thanks to all administrators, everybody that came out tonight, uh, it's always great to see the chairs full as we can. You know, there's a lot going on, um, I, uh, do you wanna bring up the, I believe, if you guys has never been there, you need to get there, uh, I'll tell you what, I'm a years now, Mrs. Circle, we've done it.
It's a very important.
Very important.
Important, and I, and you get into the impression you have for your.
Yeah.
That's important. They want everyone to been to, and, and, uh, you'll come around, with some of them, it's, it's, uh, tear jerking, it really is on some of them, and it is so much, you know, to, to the young people to stand up there and do, and so, I, I just want to put a big plug in for that.
Mr. Epple.
Just like to thank everyone for attending the meeting tonight, it's always good to hear what's, what's going on in the buildings, to see our student representatives here and hear from them, get their opinions on certain things, and, uh, look forward to moving forward with the school and keeping everything going.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I, uh, say ditto to most of that, uh, thank you to the administrators and, uh, staff that are here. The, uh, Mr. Schreider, I was thinking of you as we were talking a second ago, last weekend, I had the opportunity to watch the, uh, uh, high school and middle school POMs and dance team, their competition, there were elementary schools competing in that, that are absolutely amazing.
All right, I will start a.
And I kept looking at these little kids, thinking they were middle schoolers, and I thought, wow, they're little.
I didn't even know that until they announced it, I was like, wow.
So, you know, there's so many opportunities for kids to really start growing in, in different areas at a very young age, so. Uh, I, I agree, I think the middle school offering those sports is a, is a definite investment, there will be some costs at some point, but it's a, it's a great opportunity for us. Congratulations to Cooper Kinsler on his, uh, wrestling championship, and going on to, uh, is it my state or?
It's my state, yeah.
It's my state, I wish him the best, uh, to the, um, uh, Parnasse staff, thank you, I'm trying to think who was standing there, uh, Parnasse staff, you know, they've got some really great stuff, and, and what an honor to have the kids come talk to us while we're doing it, and have them present it, uh, they did a great job. Uh, to, uh, singing groups, uh, entertainers, uh, their big win, um, I didn't want to say this to Elijah, but, you know, are they trying to keep him from singing to the next room as well? I can say that, yeah, um, so, uh, that's, that's awesome, and then the ensemble groups that are going on in the fields that they want, is really exciting, so, so many good things happening, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, those efforts that you guys as administrators give us, that is, because we don't know all those things, and, so that's, that's good stuff, so I just want to thank everybody for being here and both having been as good.
Thank you, Mr. Priest.
I'd like to thank people for coming out here tonight, uh, I especially enjoyed the administration reports. This, like you said, they have eleven special aid teachers go for continued professional growth, I think that's pretty impressive. With a hundred and eighty-two special education students, and asking for plans to wait to continue to improve their education is, is, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate everything you do. Uh, I want to thank Mrs. Circle for, for updating newsletter that we see all the time. Mr. Reddick, it's impressive to hear we have eighteen new students coming in, and our people doing something, something right, and I'm happy for the success of the reader and the program that they're in charge of. Uh, Mr. Schreider, I had two positive comments from people who went to the PTA Mother Sundance, I think the POMs enjoy dressing up.
Peter.
Boys in a little bow tie.
Yes.
That was very, very nice. I'm gonna try to get to the dinosaur day, I wish I could even meet my grandson or something like that, I don't know, he's big into dinosaurs. Uh, I hope when Mr. Rom comes back, he's back rested and, uh, rejuvenated, he certainly deserves some time off. And I'd like to congratulate, we don't, not everyone knows it, but, Mr. Walker, and the FFA started unloading the food truck or cafeteria staff on Thursdays now, some of those boxes weigh seven, five, maybe eight pounds, so he's got the FFA boys unloading.